Regular scheduled board meeting to order. I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that the board consider amending the agenda and moving the consent item of the redistricting plan to our first business item rather than that being approved during the consent agenda.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? So we have a motion and a second to amend the agenda to move the redistricting plan from the consent agenda to our business, under our business items. If we had, do we have any discussion? If we have no discussion, I'm gonna call for a vote. All in favor? Six oh. At this time, moving on, we will, oh, I'm sorry. We need to adopt the amended agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt the amended agenda? We have a second. Thank you. Everyone in favor of adopting the amended agenda? Thank you. Now, we're moving on to our closed session. I need a motion for the Board of Education to go into closed session to preserve the attorney-client privilege to discuss personnel matters protected by state law, to discuss confidential student matters protected by general statute and FERPA, and to discuss emergency plans to respond to issues of school safety according to the general statutes listed on board docs and on the screen above. Do I have a motion? Have a motion? Do I have a second? Everyone in favor? We're now in closed session. I'll cut my mic on. And let everybody know that our Chair, Ms. Owens, is dealing with some family health issues and she couldn't make it tonight, so I'm gonna attempt to do her job. I'd like to ask Mr. Junker to have her invocation, please.
Pray with me, please. God, we thank you for the many blessings. We pray for those that are sick, that are struggling, that mournen the loss of loved ones. And we ask that you comfort them and help them to know that they are not alone. We pray for this board. We pray for the actions that we take and the decisions we make. We pray for guidance and wisdom as we do our best to lead this system in this county. We thank you for all things. Amen.
Thank you. I apologize, but I wanna take a moment to, I want us to just pause for a moment of silence for the family of Ron Kirk and Jim Everidge, please. I'd like to welcome Girl Scout Troop 41166 from First United Methodist Church with their leaders, Marjorie Foster and Gina Taylor, to have our Pledge of Allegiance.
(Applause) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Thank you. One other item's got us moving a little slow tonight, too. We're, this is our first meeting, electronic meeting, we'll say. We're going paperless. Let's see. We need to approve the minutes from our past meetings. Do we have, do we have a motion? You know what? I don't have. Okay, this is minutes from our November the 5th meeting and our December the 4th meeting. Do you have a motion to approve those minutes? Thank you, I have a motion. Second, thank you. All in favor? Now for our board report, we have some dates that I'll point out to everyone. If I can get them to come up. Mine's moving a little slow. I'm just gonna point out, we've got, there's a, there's one training, yeah, I think that would be nice if we had a hard copy. That'd be wonderful.[382.22][382.22](Laughter). Yeah, just this time. We have a, on January 16th, the North Carolina School Board Association has some school board training in Raleigh. Our next board meeting will be the 5th, Tuesday night, the 5th, at 6 o'clock in this room. The school board will be at Ellis Middle for lunch and tour the school on February the 20th. We have robotics competitions on February the 28th at all three middle schools, and those start at 4:00 PM. And then our next advisory council meeting will be from 5:30 to 8:00 at Shady Grove for Ellis, Canatzer, and Shady Grove. And at this point, I will turn it over to Dr. Hartness for our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hope everyone had a wonderful Christmas and a very happy new year. I, too, want us to seriously remember two wonderful men that we lost this past week in Davie County. Jim Everidge was superintendent of the school district for 17 years and appreciate everybody wrapping their arms around Jim's family and Candy Poplin, who was our assistant superintendent. Also, very sad that we lost a wonderful man this morning, Ron Kirk. And I want to thank our student services staff and some local ministers that have been at North Davie Middle School today to support our staff and students and wrestlers that wrestled for Ron, who were wrestling this afternoon. The boys decided that they wanted to wrestle in honor of Coach Kirk. So please, we're, continue to remember Ron's family and your thoughts and prayers. And just wanna say again, thank you to everyone who helps us through a crisis like that and supports our teachers and our students. Takes everybody to work together. I wanna congratulate the board on moving to our electronic meetings. I know it will take a little time for us to get the flow working, but what this allows us to do is for you to have access to materials electronically before our meetings. And those of you who follow our board meetings online, our agenda is posted a few days before this meeting, as well as the agenda items, and you can see those posted here. And the attachments and the things that the board are reviewing are available for the public on our board website. If you go to our district website, www.davie.k12.nc.us, and click on Board of Education, you can be able to access all the information that the board is reviewing through our board doc system. So we'll work the kinks out of that and keep working with it, but hopefully continue to become more efficient. While I'm thanking folks, I just wanna kinda go off the beaten path here for a second and say a big thank you to all of my staff. We've got a lot of projects that we're working on right now, and I have just really been impressed with the way everybody, you know, jumps in when we have things that need to get done, and they make it happen. And that's everyone from our administrative staff to the people we work with and support every day in our schools. We are blessed to have a good team of people who know how to make things happen. So I just wanna say a thank you for your vision and direction and your dedication to the school system. We're blessed. As we begin a new school year, you see our logos on the two television screens. We're gonna retire that logo. The Taking the Lead logo is being retired and being replaced by the new Davie County Schools logo, and I think they're gonna post that up here in just a minute. But I wanna share that logo with you tonight, let you know that we had a committee of people who came to work together, and you can see that up here. And the new logo is a reflection of our strategic planning. There are words there that describe what we want to accomplish, innovate, achieve, and excel. And as we roll out our strategic plan over the next month or two, you will see that theme throughout the strategic plan and the strategic planning process. So you will begin to see this logo on our communications and posted on our presentations and every types of communication we have with each other and with our community. So I wanna thank the committee for working with us on that, and I think that's a logo that we will see a lot of over the coming weeks and months. Board, on my section in board docs, you will see a couple attachments. One is our annual report for 2011-12 school year. That's a reflection on last school year, test data, just all types of facts about Davie County schools in our annual report. Those will just be posted online. We're not gonna make a lot of copies of those, but that's for your review and for the community's review. We'll use that when we communicate with prospective businesses or parents who are interested in our school system. And in addition to that, you have a year-end review, which is more of a narrative of what has taken place in each of our schools, and I wanna thank our principals for helping put that together. But those two documents are available and are already available on our website. So thanks to Stephanie for pulling that together. We'll try to do that around Christmas each year as a reflection on the previous year. Our facilities planning is going well. We have with us tonight, he'll be here in just a few minutes, Wesley Curtis and Clark Pierce from Walter Robbs Callahan Pierce, and they will give us an update on where we are in our schematic design. We've had a number of planning sessions and work sessions since we hired them in November. In December, we had two days at Davie High School with some planning. They'll talk about that. They'll talk about the site visits that we've made to several schools in Forsyth County, the site visit we made yesterday to Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools. And as we get to that agenda item, I'm gonna go over to the podium as well, since not every boy on the board was able to attend those site visits, and just give you a glimpse as to what we saw on those visits. We had a request not long ago to set up some site visits or some tours of the current Davie County High School campus. We have those scheduled. They're posted on our website. The next tour is tomorrow at 9:30. We have those also scheduled for 9:30 on January 29th, 9:30 on February 20th, and 9:30 on March the 6th. Those are campus tours that take place during the school day, and that's a time when you can see school happening, and you can see how the campus is used by our students. And we've had a request to set up a few nighttime dates for people that are working during the day, that can't get off work to attend one of the others. So on January the 24th and February the 12th, we will have tours of the Davie County High School campus beginning at 6 o'clock on those two evenings. Several weeks ago, we all experienced a major tragedy in Connecticut, and it was just incomprehensible. And as we started to reflect on that and how it affects the way we do business and education in schools, on that Monday, we pulled together a school safety task force of emergency personnel in Davie County. It was Monday, December the 17th, we met, and we had representation from the Sheriff's Department, the Mossville Police Department, Coolamie Police Department, Emergency Services, our E-911 director, our county manager, representation from the District Attorney's Office, and a number of staff for us to begin a comprehensive review of what our plans are in a crisis. And had a very productive meeting. He was not able to attend, but I talked with Doug Hayes from the North Carolina State Highway Patrol, and we talked about their emergency plans and how they can help us in the event of a crisis. And we began reviewing our systems and putting together some action items as to what we can do to become even better prepared to deal with crisis in a school setting. And I want to assure everyone that we have crisis management plans, that our teachers and teacher assistants and staff are accustomed to, our students do real well as we practice those drills multiple times each school year. But we wanna do everything we can to continue to be diligent to keep our children in Davie County safe. So we came up with a list of action items. I've shared a number of those with the Board of Education tonight in closed session. Many of them are private because they're private security measures that we don't wanna necessarily share publicly. But we have a number of things that we're working with local law enforcement to make our schools even safer than they are today. A few of the things that I'll share tonight with the public that we're doing, we have security cameras in most of our schools. We're continuing the rollout of additional security cameras throughout our campuses, so those have been very effective in the past. And also, I wanna thank Brian Jacobs, our lead school resource officer, for activating a student hotline. We have posters that have gone out this week, and you'll see a copy of that poster on the screen now. It's a school hotline. It's a toll-free number where students or others can call in and provide information if they have threats of violence or bullying or wanna report child abuse or any other thing that might be of concern to them. They can anonymously call or they can give information, and we will investigate those concerns. So we're notified when those calls come in, and I wanna thank the Sheriff's Department and Brian Jacobs for making that possible. And as you go through our schools, you'll see those posters there, and that number will also be posted on our website. We are very thankful for the relationship that we have with the emergency personnel in our community. We're all working together very diligently to, again, keep our schools safe places to both work and learn. So, board, that is my update for tonight. We're excited about the direction we're going in. There's a lot of things going on. Our strategic plan is coming together. Our facilities planning is coming together. So we've got a very busy spring ahead of us, but there are great days ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hartness. I would also like to echo your thanks to the county police, the county sheriff's department, the police, all the law enforcement agencies and emergency services you've worked with with our safety plans. I want to thank them and appreciate their time. At this time, I would ask Ms. Kofin to come up for our student and staff recognitions.
Tonight, Mr. Wallace will recognize our Assistant Principal of the Year and two football accomplishments, followed by a special donation from author Marie Roth.
Again, this is a wonderful opportunity I have to recognize one of our special folks, and as Dr. Hartness mentioned just a few moments ago about how our staff works together and pulls together, and I have the grand opportunity of recognizing one of those folks this after, this evening. Ms. Foster, will you come up? Mary Foster, please. Mary Foster is an assistant principal at Shady Grove. Ms. Foster is also our district AP, Assistant Principal of the Year for the 12-13 school year. She graduated with a BA in elementary education from Wake Forest University and a note, a magna cum laude. She also completed her Master of School Administration in 2009 from UNC Greensboro. She started with us in 2009 and has done an absolutely wonderful job, and I will, I have been in her school many times, and I think I've shared this with a couple of groups, I'm not sure who all I shared it with, but you're not going to find her in her office, which is a good thing. I like that. You're also, she doesn't walk very slow unless she's walking and talking to children. Part of the description describes her as being very busy, very energetic, very intelligent, and I have seen all of those in action. So if you've got something to say to Ms. Foster, now she's not disrespectful, but you better say it quickly, 'cause she's got things to do. And that's the way we like it. I have seen many children hug her, call her by name, and I have seen her call them by name, which are many former educators and administrators here and folks, and we know that is absolutely key, and there's obviously parents here, that we know that that is critical to the, in that relationship with our children. So Ms. Foster, it is my privilege to recognize you as the 2012-13 Davie County District Assistant Principal of the Year. Congratulations.[1221.08][1221.08](Applause). Yes, ma'am. (Applause). She's also at the school with my, her wife and students.[1231.92][1231.92](Laughter). Also have the opportunity for a couple other recognitions. Just another example of the achievements of people and part of our school system. And Mr. Cole Blankenship was a young man who just graduated from Davie High when Ms. Haynes, right before Christmas break, December 21st, which we have someone in here that can tell us exactly. Well, Mr. Blankenship, Cole Blankenship is not with us tonight because he is on the University of North Carolina State, where he is on a football scholarship. So they wanted him to get started early, which I think is an absolutely wonderful thing. But we do have his mother with us, Ms. Blank, I'm sorry. There we go, see? About messed up. Ms. Correll, come on up, if you would, and we would, and I asked Mr. Whitlock, our county AD, to share a couple things in recognizing Cole Blankenship, one of our seniors who participated in the Shrine Bowl this past week.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Like Mr. Wallace said, Cole is already at NC State on a four-year scholarship. He's, if he hasn't started, he's getting ready to start spring football. Cole was selected to the Shrine Bowl this year, only the 11th player in Davie County history to make the Shrine Bowl. Only 44 players from the state of North Carolina make it each year. After a week of practice, the players and coaches at the Shrine Bowl voted Cole to be one of the captains of the team, which is a great honor, you know, coming from Davie County, representing Davie County well. So I'd like to congratulate you, Felicia, and Taylor, her sister, and accept an award for Cole tonight.[1362.51][1362.51](Applause).
We have one other opportunity, or Shrine Bowl recognition, and this is our head football coach, Mr. Doug Eilling. Coach Eilling, would you step up, please? And I will let Coach Whitlock share some things about Coach Eilling, which obviously I had the privilege to work with Coach Eilling for almost four years at Davie High School, and I've always said that anyone that can coach can teach. And I want to put a plug in for this young man right here, that when I walked in his classrooms, teaching was taking place. He also taught EOCs, which end-of-course tests, so not only was he evaluated 10 or 11 or 12 or 13 Friday nights in the fall, he was also evaluated with his performance in the classroom on, it twice a year. And I must say, he performed very well, which that's all public data, and you can look at that. So Coach, that means a lot to me. It means a lot to all of us in here that we have a leader in our school and a head coach that also performs in the classroom, so. But now, I'll turn it over to Mr. Whitlock to share some things about the Shrine Bowl.
Thank you. Coach Eilling has been our head football coach for 15 years at Davie County. All-time winningest coach in the history of Davie County, 127 wins, averaging over eight wins a season. I've had the opportunity to work with Coach Eilling for seven years as offensive coordinator, and not as a coach, I mean, he's a great coach, but he's a great motivator. He builds character with each individual, and it's an honor for me to work with him those seven years. I'd like to congratulate Coach Eilling for being selected as a Shrine Bowl coach. It's a great honor, and he represented Davie County well on behalf of all the board members, people here in Davie County. Congratulations.[1497.23][1497.23](Applause).
I'm gonna stop him. I was gonna make a joke to say how old he was and say that he coached me when I was in high school, but then I thought about Barry, 'cause Barry was at South Davie whenever I was there as a student. So, but just for anybody that's played sports, as far as a coach and what they mean to them, I know Doug personally, and I'm glad that I'm able to stand here and say thank you for what you do for my family as a coaching and the difference that you make, and it's people like you that make me want to wish that you were my coach. So we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all.[1548.42][1548.42](Applause). My next opportunity to make recognition, I wanna start out by, the first time I ever saw this young man, we were having a, it was freshman orientation three years ago, and there was a body, a young man, sitting at midcourt on the floor. And I turned around and caught a glimpse of him, and I'm telling you, it looked like his leg stretched almost to midcourt. And I went immediately to someone, I said, "Who is that?" And the first words out of their mouth were, "Well, he's only 13, almost right at 14, but he's a, he'll be a freshman next year." And you'll understand when I ask him. So, Mr. Tripp McNeil, would you stand up, please, and step up here for me, please? So, now you can see why those legs look like they stretched to midcourt from the sideline. Tripp, also one of our football players and fine student athletes, was recognized this year as All-State. He is a junior and will be returning to us again next year, but I had the pleasure of working with Tripp for almost three years, and I must say, he's a fine young man. Wherever he sees me, he speaks and we talk, and I'll let Coach Whitlock share some things with you with, about Mr. Tripp McNeil.
Tripp McNeil is a three-year starter as offensive lineman, and like Mr. Wallace said, one good thing about it, for Coach Eilling, he's only a junior, so he'll be back one more year. Tripp was the, only the 13th player in school history to be named to All-State, and that's only 11 people picked on offense, and he was one of those 11 picked by journalists all over the state. So, and that, being as a junior, that's real special. Tripp has offers coming in left and right from NC State, that other school, UNC? UNC, Virginia, Wake, Duke, and many more to come. So, Tripp, we'd like to congratulate you on All-State honors.[1695.73][1695.73](Applause).
Being able to participate in, and then as a player and as a coach, and now I don't do that either one of those anymore, but it's absolutely incredible what it takes for a coach and his staff to generate opportunities for people with talent and desire to get to the level that you've gotten to. You're not finished yet. Keep it up and remember where home is, okay? Congratulations.[1733.33][1733.33](Applause).
Mr. Joshua, could I, before you shake hands, could I just interject something here, and I know you know what I'm gonna say, but I got to meet Tripp when he was what I thought was four, but he was only two. And he was coming into the preschool with his dad, and I was taking him to the four-year-old class, and his dad said, "No, he's just a two-year-old." And he was just, I'm sure he doesn't remember me, but I'll never forget you and what a sweet child you were, and I'd like to think I just taught you everything you knew about football while you were at Massa Dumbly Preschool, so congratulations. So, congratulations. If we could, please get a representative from each school to come up, and we'll for a photo op, please.
Thank you, Ms. Co-Fed. I would like to thank Ms. Roth on behalf of the board.
We greatly appreciate that and appreciate all your hard work in putting that information together and writing those books. We're, it'll be a great addition to our schools. Thank you. I'd also like to congratulate the folks that were recognized as well. I think they've already gone, but moving on with our agenda, we're coming to the consent agenda, and I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Yeah, we've already approved the agenda, so. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Do we have any discussion about the consent agenda? Okay, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Thank you. Motion passes six oh. The next item, next section on our agenda is the business items. Our first item is the redistricting proposal, and I'll ask Dr. Hartness to talk to us about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we're all aware, our facilities assessment last spring indicated a recommendation to study redistricting, and we put together a timeline for studying that issue, and Mr. Wallace pulled together a committee of parents and representatives from schools, and our transportation staff, and our accountability staff, and looked at student enrollment. We brought to you proposals from the committee and recommendations from the committee in the fall. We presented the plan at our last board meeting in December, and our timeline was that we would ask you to consider adopting the redistricting plan in January. Since that redistricting plan has been discussed by the board, I've had no concerns from the community at this point in time. I haven't heard from any of you as well that you're hearing concerns about the plan. So tonight, our recommendation from staff would be that we adopt the redistricting plan as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Hartness. And you may have already done this, but I just wanted to point out, we had that, redistricting committee was made up of people from all across Davie County, parents, staff. Thank you. We have a proposal on the table for redistricting. I would ask for a motion to adopt this proposal. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion?
I know that redistricting was something that folks sort of want to shy away from or run from or not have to do unless you really have to do it. I was really pleased to have heard some of the results of the discussions on how that process took place with all the input, and was pleased when the end result was that it did not affect a great number of students, that it happened with the least amount of switching and changing as possible. It was a necessary event. It's gonna upset someone somewhere sometime, I'm sure, but having gone through the process, I'm really appreciative of all those that put, had some input into getting that done. It was necessary. Thank you for doing it.
Have any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion, and a second on the floor. I'll call for a vote. Everyone in favor of the redistricting proposal passes six oh. Thank you. And I would echo Mr. Drexler's comments. There was a lot of hard work put into that by the administration and staff and also folks from the community. The next item on our agenda is facilities update, and I'll call on Dr. Hartness.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have with us our architectural firm with Wesley Curtis and Clark Pierce. And before I turn it over to these two gentlemen, I'm gonna go to the podium and share with you some of the slides of photographs that were taken on our site visits over the past several weeks. We had several of our board members who attended site visits to three sites in Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, and as recently as yesterday morning, attend a visit at Rocky River High School in Mint Hill as part of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools. Since not everyone was able to attend all of those site visits, what I wanted to do is just give the audience and the rest of the board a brief glimpse into what we saw when we visited there. And the way I like to do this, I've got a number of slides, and I don't want to spend much time on each one, but just to kind of give you an idea of what we saw. And those of you who were in attendance, if you want to say, you know, this is something we liked, something we didn't care for, because what we did is we had our architects with us, and we were able to talk to them about the things that we liked about the sites, the things that we did not like. We took teachers along with us to the schools in Forsyth County, so we had teachers representing departments at Davie High School who had an opportunity to see new construction and what that new construction looked like and envisioned what their departments and their classrooms would be like in a new school. So we heard feedback from a lot of different people, so that tonight, I just want to give you a glimpse into what we saw. Another thing I would preface as we go through this is that we visited two large urban districts in North Carolina, Forsyth and Charlotte Meckler, two of the larger districts in the state, along with Guilford and Wake. And what we found in those site visits are none of the high schools in those school districts have all of the programs on campus. And what I mean by that, for example, we were in Forsyth County, and they have a career center, so they have their career and technical education on that site. What we saw yesterday in Charlotte Mecklenburg did not have a lot of the career and technical education things that we do on our campus. Those larger urban districts serve students in a different way. Do they have all the things that we do in Davie County? Absolutely. And in some cases, because of their magnitude, they have programs that we don't offer. So what we have to do is, as we consider these site visits, we have to look at, okay, if we're in a county, as we are, with one large consolidated school, how do we take the parts and pieces from what we see and put them into one site? Because we have to serve all children and as many programs as we can as possible in Davie County because we have one high school. And we're fortunate. We can offer a wide variety of courses on this campus. So what we didn't see is one school that was just like, this is what we want. What we saw are parts and pieces. So let's go through some of those parts and pieces. The first school that we visited was Ronald Reagan High School in Forsyth County. This is the front entrance to Reagan High School. This school was designed by Walter Robbs Callahan Pierce. The plans that the Board of Education had in 2010 were somewhat based on this school as well, so that's the front of Reagan High School. We saw when we were in the front hallway there, they had some business partners, and those business partners were recognized in that big sign up there. Pretty interesting. This was their auditorium, fairly spacious auditorium, a lot of seating for their student population. We saw their drama class, I believe that is their drama class down front. They conducted their class in the auditorium where they would be performing. This was a dance classroom at Reagan. This was a chorus class at Reagan. And in all these sites, we saw acoustical panels on the walls, and in some cases yesterday, we saw them in the ceiling as well. This is a band room at Reagan, so our folks were able to walk through there. Instrument storage. This is the cafeteria at Reagan High School. And if we look at this next slide, you'll see that they have seating on the outside. This is looking out of the cafeteria. So from inside, if you went to the left, you'll see these doors here, and students can walk outside and eat their lunch as well. They have plans to try to expand that. One of the things we talked about that would be a priority for us as we work with our architects is that we would like to have a cafeteria that would seat at least 600 so that we could have three lunch periods rather than five. Restrooms. This is the media center at Reagan. Science labs. This is the main corridor that runs across the front of the school. Saw some very spacious hallways. On each of the classroom wings, they had lockers at the end of those hallways. We'll talk about lockers in a few minutes because we've heard some conflicting stories as we've gone through these different schools and asked how students use lockers. This is one of the features our teachers really liked, is having an office area or a cubicle that they could use to plan and work in. It's another area for planning and copying for class instruction. It's inside another hallway. You can see our group there on the classroom wing. Reagan is a two-story structure, am I right, Wes? So we have elevators, gymnasium. And then we left Reagan and went to the career center. And again, in Forsyth County, career and technical education is offered at the career center, so we saw a lot of different programs there that are offered for students in Forsyth, but a number of students travel there during the day for career and technical education. This is the outside of that building. It's located off of Highway 52. You can see it from the road if you're going on 52 North. This is part of their foods instruction. They have a large commercial kitchen for their foods instruction, and they're able to serve large groups of people there. It's the main gathering area. They have a north and a south campus. Again, there are a lot of students that commute into this campus every day. This is their collision and auto repair shop, so they have a collision course or auto body repair course. This is the classroom. It's their auto body shop, and their students in construction trades actually build a house. We traveled there from the career center to Walkertown High School, and Walkertown was also designed by Walter Robbs Callahan Pierce, and a lot of the features that were in Reagan were duplicated at Walkertown with some twist as well. Classrooms are configured a little different, media centers in a different area of the building, but we got to see how that would work. If you look in the middle of this picture, right in here, this is the main entrance to the school. So this is inside the main entrance, and one of the features that I liked as your superintendent, especially as we are conscious about safety and entrance and egress to schools, is that visitors to the school would come in the main doors, and these doors would remain locked over here, and they would be coming through the main office before they entered the rest of the school building. So very controlled access to this school, which is a very nice safety feature. And you can see, this is a map of that school, and as people would come in after the school day begins, they would come into the entrance, into the reception office area, and then out into the school. All the doors will open to the exits, but you're forced through the office area before you enter the part of the school. You're talking about a campus, you know, with several thousand students and people inside where after school begins, you have one entrance point. This is their auxiliary gym, and if you look up to the right in this picture, you can't see it real well on that screen, but there are wrestling mats that are suspended from the ceiling that are used and stored there. This is the main gymnasium. And as we talked about gym seating, we wanted a capacity of 2,000 in a new school. This is the band room. This is the chorus room. This is the auditorium at Walkertown. It's very similar to the auditorium at Reagan in that those back two areas, or at least one of those areas, can be folded back and converted into classroom space if that's needed. These are the hallways at Walkertown. Carazo floors. This was the media center. This was a foods course or foods classroom. Pictures of restrooms. This is a panoramic view of weight room. Saw a few people lifting weights while we were there. This is their locker room facility. Showers, handicap accessible showers. This is storage for athletic equipment. It's their athletic facility, large stadium. This is one part of the Walkertown cafeteria. On one side of the cafeteria, you have this area, and then there's additional seating over to the left. If you were to go down this hallway in this direction, there's additional seating back over to the left. And from an administrator's view, we really like this concept of being able to be able to see all of your seating at one time from the spot back in here. It was a very inviting atmosphere for students to eat in. Yesterday, we traveled to Rocky River High School in Mint Hill, and this is the entrance to that school. This school was designed by Little Diversified Architecture out of Charlotte. This is their band room to the right. This is their auditorium, which is considerably smaller than what we saw at Reagan and Walkertown, but another theater class having their class there on the stage. This is the main corridor that you walk down when you first enter the building. The office is down on the left, gymnasium is on the right, and the auditorium would be behind you if you were standing looking down that hallway. One of the things we didn't like about the school was the flooring, the polished concrete flooring. To the right is their gymnasium, and you'll see the, they had the right colors. They definitely had the right colors, and it was a beautiful paint scheme, I thought, inside the school. But this is their auxiliary gym. There's a big screen that comes down between the main gym and the auxiliary gym, so you can have two different instructional areas. So this is the there. This is the main gymnasium. And as we talked about gym seating, we wanted a capacity of 2,000 in a new school. This is the band room. This is the chorus room. This is the auditorium at Walkertown. It's very similar to the auditorium at Reagan in that those back two areas, or at least one of those areas, can be folded back and converted into classroom space if that's needed. These are the hallways at Walkertown. Terrazzo floors. This was the media center. This was a foods course or foods classroom. Pictures of restrooms. This is a panoramic view of weight room. Saw a few people lifting weights while we were there. This is their locker room facility. Showers, handicap accessible showers. This is storage for athletic equipment. It's their athletic facility, large stadium. This is one part of the Walkertown cafeteria. On one side of the cafeteria, you have this area, and then there's additional seating over to the left. If you were to go down this hallway in this direction, there's additional seating back over to the left. And from an administrator's view, we really liked this concept of being able to be able to see all of your seating at one time from the spot back in here. It was a very inviting atmosphere for students to eat in. Yesterday, we traveled to Rocky River High School in Mint Hill. And this is the entrance to that school. This school was designed by Little Diversified Architecture out of Charlotte. This is their band room to the right. This is their auditorium, which is considerably smaller than what we saw at Reagan and Walkertown. But another theater class, having their class there on the stage. This is the main corridor that you walk down when you first enter the building. The office is down on the left. Gymnasium is on the right. And the auditorium would be behind you if you were standing, looking down that hallway. One of the things we didn't like about the school was the flooring, the polished concrete flooring. To the right is their gymnasium, and you'll see the... They had the right colors. They definitely had the right colors. And it was a beautiful paint scheme, I thought, inside the school. But this is their auxiliary gym. There's a big screen that comes down between the main gym and the auxiliary gym. So you can have two different instructional areas. So this is the main gym, and it seats around 2,000 students. This is their locker room facilities and showers. Picture to the left is a seating area outside for students. I know we've heard several people say that was a nice feature in the places that we visited, is have an opportunity for students to eat outside if they chose. To the right is athletic facility. They have an artificial synthetic-type surface on their athletic fields. See our architect in the equipment storage room in their fieldhouse. This is one of their hallways. One of the things we didn't care for was the VCT tile in the main hallways, which would be more difficult to maintain than terrazzo. Some students coming down the hallway there, and then a glimpse of their media center. The media center was very large, had a lot of natural light coming in, and some sun shades that came down that's necessary, especially in the morning and the wintertime. So it was a beautiful media center. This was a two-story structure. And to the right, you'll see a cafeteria, had multiple places for students to pick up their lunch. They do have a scenario where they have about the same population as we have at Davie High, and they have three lunches. So students were able to get in there during three lunch periods. Again, the picture on the left is an idea of why we didn't like the polished concrete floors. And on the right, the large glass there is looking into the media center on the second floor, which is above the administrative wing on the first floor. Another thing that we didn't care for, if you look at this map of the layout, one of the things that we liked when we talked about our facility study was the potential of having outdoor light in the classrooms. And in this school, the way it was designed, there were large numbers of classrooms and interior areas, both on this floor and the second floor of the classroom wings, that did not have any type of outside light. So that was not something we cared for. And that includes our site visits. And that's just a glimpse. We spent a lot of hours on this, and the board had an opportunity to see different campuses. Board, do you have things that you'd like to share with the public or those who were not able to attend, of things you liked or didn't like on the site visits?
I have several kinds of questions to ask regarding site and facility, but I'll hold them until after we hear that report.
Okay.
Maybe a better time.
Anyone else, or you want to wait for Wesley and Clark to share with you where we are? Okay. I will turn it over to Wesley Curtis and Clark Pierce. And before I turn it over to them, I want to say thank you to both these gentlemen. We spent a lot of hours together with them and staff, and the way they've handled the site visits, the way they've handled the interviews with our employees, and interacted with our students. As we had students participate in some of the planning has been exemplary. So we appreciate the partnership that we have with Walter Robbs Callahan Pierce. So Wesley and Clark, you're up.
I guess the first thing that I think I want to say is, as a firm, we appreciate the continued confidence that you've expressed in our firm in continuing forward with this project. We've not had the opportunity to publicly thank you for that, and we do appreciate it. As Dr. Harkness has said, it's been a fairly intense process since we were selected. We started out on the 20th, and we got together in Dr. Harkness's office and sat down with what I'm going to call, we call it Group A in the slides that you'll see. And we had our initial meeting, and the group that we call Group A, you know, could be referred to as the Executive Planning Committee or Design Committee, if you will, but an Oversight Committee, if you will, that understands the overall needs and concerns of the campus. And that consisted of Dr. Harkness, Jeff Wallace of Operations, Jenda Haynes, the principal for the high school. Says Michael up there. That's Michael, you know who you are, Michael Spillman, Assistant Maintenance Director, and of course, myself and Wesley Curtis. So that initial meeting, the intent was just to sort of plan out a timeline in the process, how we needed to meet, how often we need to meet, who we needed to meet with. And, you know, a lot of that, we had to leave to Dr. Harkness and his staff to determine who the individuals are that need to have a part in this process. So that meeting occurred over in the administrative office on November 20th. And then right after Thanksgiving, I think we were at it again on the 27th. The 27th was really, and we've got some slides that talk about the repurposing. So, you know, we weren't just talking about the new high school. We were talking about the new high school, and then what do we do with the old high school site? Because they sort of go hand in hand. We can't do one without the other. So that was sort of going along parallel paths to some extent. And there were different groups involved with those processes. On the 4th and the 5th of December, we got together up to school for two days of meeting with a variety of the different staff members from the high school, teachers, students, just about anyone that you can think of from that campus, to get their input on what the school needs were. And, you know, and as always is the case in this process, it's not just needs, it's dreams and what we'd like to have, and maybe we can afford it and maybe we can't. So it was a winnowing out process that has to occur at some point. When you get through that process, you know, you always, you never have enough money, and you never can afford what you really want to build or would like to build. But, you know, that's where we have to rein it back in. Superintendent and his staff have to be involved in that process very strongly to make sure that what we're getting is what the real needs are for the school. Of course, Dr. Harkness mentioned that we've been on a few trips. That happened on the 12th of December, and I'll not go into that, but a variety of schools were visited. I guess pretty much a full day on the 14th, I believe, of December. This is sort of what the process looked like in the programming. We set up a schedule of meetings with various staff. We gave them time slots. They were allowed to fill in when they could be there. They were typically, you know, half an hour, 45 minutes, depending on what was being discussed. And we just sat down with them, and they told us what their needs were. Now, you know, granted, we're jumping off from a school that's, to some extent, been designed, but there are additional needs for this school that weren't planned in the original school, because the original school didn't encompass the CTE and the Vo-Tec classes on the new campus. So that had to be planned in. We had to gather that input. And since it was based upon a prototype for another system, you know, this was an opportunity to find, okay, how is Davie County and their needs different from Forsyth County? And how do we fit those into new facilities? So we had some very intense discussions with a variety of staff. And I think probably the most heartening of the entire process was the involvement of the students. We had a variety of student groups, and I can't remember them all, but there were probably at least a dozen different groups. Leadership groups, student leaders from student council, the various grade level leaders. We had some interior design. We had the STEM group. I think we had the drafting group. Any group that you can think of just about came through en masse as a group with their teacher, and we explained the process to them. I'm not sure which group it is that you're seeing there. And then we had the existing school that we planned a few years ago displayed, so they can understand at least the jumping off point for the process that we were undertaking. A number of few board members were involved in saw the process and the results of the process. What we'd like to do was, where we got comments that, in some cases, were comical comments that were strong comments that we heard more than once, we pinned them up on the board. And that's what you see on the wall behind us, behind the couple of board members there. This two-day meeting was actually held over on the high school campus in the multipurpose room and behind the, actually across from the media center. So, you know, after we went through this process, we had a meeting to talk about where we'd been, and also a meeting to discuss, you know, what we saw at the site visits, what were some likes and dislikes? How might they be incorporated? You know, then we're, right now, we're in the process of trying to refine the program and finalize that program. And I think we're pretty close on getting to where we think the final program needs to be. Next step in the process, after the program is approved, everyone commits to the space needs, and we'll take those program needs and develop a conceptual plan. We'll meet again with Group A, the Executive Planning Committee, and we'll develop a concept or schematic design plan. Review it again, and we'll finalize that plan and present it for board approval. We expect that hopefully to be sometime next month. Again, the repurposing process was ongoing, sort of hand in hand with this process. Dr. Harkness put together a list of a number of community leaders, including parents and coaching staff and Little League, and you name it, county manager, economic development, you know, they were all there. I think, I don't know how many were invited, but I think 25 showed up. And I think 25 out of 27 that we anticipated that I think had committed to be there showed up. There may have actually been more invited. So it was a good cross-section of county that was involved in this process. And this was, you know, a two- or three-hour process, one morning, again, over in the same room where we had the programming process. We divided up into two groups. Wesley sort of handled one group, I handled the other group, because you've got that many people all trying to talk at once. But it was pretty engaging and pretty exciting to see some of the thoughts about what the plans for the existing Davie High School campus could be. And I think for the most part, it revolved around some needs, perhaps a school system of moving administrative needs and trying to consolidate some of their operations. For instance, getting out of a 100-year-old existing building, perhaps moving into the K Building, keeping the gyms, some of the spaces adjacent to the gyms, the rec fields, and developing additional ball fields of a variety yet to be determined. There seemed to be a strong expression of need for Little League fields, but, excuse me, nothing was off the table. We talked about pools, we talked about tennis courts, baseball fields, soccer fields. If it was a sport that you could think of, for the most part, it was discussed as possibility of locating on that site. And, you know, that would probably go hand in hand with the county. It's, you know, we didn't really get into a lot of discussion about maintenance and ownership and that sort of thing. It was just to brainstorm what are the possibilities for that site. It was pretty much decided it would not be an instructional site. It would be administrative, possibly, thank you, county recreation. We do know that there's ongoing countywide study for the parks and recreation, and we had folks there that represented all of those areas of concern, including Scott Miller, who was writing that report. So it was a very exciting process. And these are some of those folks. Sorry about the fuzziness of the picture, but you probably recognize some of them. Comments were pinned up on the board, or on the wall each side of the room. This particular slide that you see on the wall there was, I guess, on the smart board. That's just one possibility, but that's definitely not the only possibility. So the next step in the process of the existing site is to finalize, again, with the executive group, based on the input we received from the community, what might be the best approach for that site. And then once that is sort of settled on, and then depending on how the ownership of that works out, I mean, it could very easily be that the county, as opposed to the school system, ends up owning that site if it's a recreational facility. So, you know, the final decision in how that may eventually develop may not lie with the school board, it may lie with the county, but that's yet to be determined in how that transaction may occur. But the key point, I think, that was made by several is it needs to dovetail. You know, we can't go off and design the new high school and forget about the existing and let it become a ghost town. It has to have a need. It can be a very strong economic generator for that area of the county. There's a lot of rec sports that bring tournaments, bring families, bring dollars to the county. So everybody was really excited about what the possibilities could be for that campus. Again, we just need to finalize the schematic plans. So that's probably more than you wanted to hear. A lot of you were involved in it, so a lot of you in the board probably knew a lot of that already. Any questions for me, or Wesley, or Dr. Harkness?
I first want to thank you guys for all the hard work you're doing on this project. And I'm glad that we've developed, I think it's good to see this, especially on this repurposing plan, all these community stakeholders involved. I think it's a really good idea. But I'll open it up. Is there any questions?
Several things came to mind when I was looking at the pictures earlier of the site views, site visits that were done. I have a list of things that are probably some of the things that were listed on that board as discussions came on. Can I list eight things that I wrote down and then go back and say each one individually? Let you speak to that?
I'll try my best.
Things that came to mind, either having heard it through the community of folks that have been participating in these site views, or just directly from the pictures that I saw. Any discussion on having in, for example, a wing of a building that is the science, I was a biology teacher, having a science lab or lab rooms that are not specifically same everyday classroom use? And/or, in your concept, are the science labs in individual teacher classrooms? For example, is there, say, two or three classrooms, and they share a lab room? Or maybe four classrooms that share that lab when they have lab exercises to do? Or does each biology class or chemistry class have a space large enough so that each teacher has the lab space and the classroom being in the same position? Second one. Students enrolled at Reagan, as an example. Do they drive themselves to the Career Center, or does the school system provide transportation for them? Third one. Cafeteria with a courtyard eating space. I saw in the back of the picture that that courtyard was open to the bus parking lot. I'm talking about safety issues is why I'm bringing that up. I would think going to Buddy Lowry and asking this question, but in my opinion, and I think he would agree, that a wrestling room is necessary for the wrestling program and not a mat that hangs on a wall and you occupy gym space for wrestling practice. The value of a separate wrestling The value of a separate wrestling practice room is very, very vital to what Buddy Lowery would say is one of the reasons for his success that he has that. Hallways. I'm sure, I don't know what the dimensions are, but I'm sure that primary halls and secondary halls have a different width. There's probably requirements. Overhead space in the cafeteria, one of the pictures, it looked really, really neat with big round things over the ceiling, et cetera. Looked to be twenty, twenty-five-foot tall ceilings. To me, that, it looks great, but if you put a second floor, you could have other classrooms or wrestling room upstairs. Number of shower spaces. In the picture that I saw, I saw several spaces and they had to pull curtains on the front, but one of the concerns at the current high school here is that there are X number of showerheads, so X number of bodies can be at that same time with separate spaces so my water doesn't roll across Wendy's feet. Amputations are not contagious, but other things are. Artificial turf on a football field? I would think it's more expensive to put it down there. I don't know about the maintenance costs, you don't mow it as often. And how about any, is it injury-prone? So that's my list. Can I go back and say anything, or do you just want to start talking?
I don't know if I can remember all eight of those, but I'll try and lay it into it.
The first one that, that definitely, science lab, yeah.
I think, right now, the thought is, in the comments we've heard, is that, you know, typically each science lab would be self-contained and have what it needs. Certainly, if we follow the state guidelines, what they typically would show is the ability to re-raise the rooms, like if you have your classroom tables set up, you can, those tables actually become lab desks that slide up against the counters at the perimeter of the room, if you have one that's arranged with tables. But typically, what they would promote at the state level would be that the lab space, as well as a classroom space, be contained within the science room itself. And for the most part, we generally see two science rooms sharing a prep room. That's fairly standard. We saw something similar down at Charlotte or Men Hill yesterday, so that's not uncommon.
My reason for bringing that up, and you can speak more to it, or be finished, whichever you decide, it seems to me that having six biology classrooms that are able to set up biology labs in six different spaces, that's a whole lot of turf. And if you had two science biology rooms sharing, one of them being the lab space and the other one just a classroom, the classroom could be smaller, which would allow more space for the lab, and then the teachers could be in that room for a week or two-week time and then swap classes, et cetera, or spaces. Just a thought.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think potentially, depending on proximity of other classrooms and their use, that could certainly work. But, you know, I think we're planning right now for Wesley, fourteen, is it twelve? Twelve, twelve science labs. Second question.
Driving students from a school to a tech center.
Wesley was involved more so than I on the Career Center, but I believe there's a little bit of both. There is bus service, but a lot of the students do, in fact, drive from their, you know, their home high school to the Career Center campus and then back. But bus, bus transportation is offered.
Very tall ceilings in the cafeteria?
Wesley, again, could tell you what the ceiling height is in the dining room at Reagan. There are different levels of ceiling height at the Walkertown School that some visited, so that's a possibility. But when you've got six or seven hundred kids, you know, and as loud as they are and moving around, you want a little higher ceiling space than you would have, you know, if you had a couple hundred. It just makes it feel roomier, even if it's not. It's just a psychological thing, providing more space. Now, you know, what's appropriate, how much is too much and how much is enough, you know, is anybody's guess. A lot of it is purely aesthetics.
Cafeteria courtyard opening up into a bus parking lot.
Walkertown, that's not the case. It opens, the cafeteria opens up to a courtyard that overlooks the classroom wing. At Reagan, it does open up to the bus parking, but the bus parking has basically a barrier or canopy or whatever. So I don't, what was the issue with, with that in your mind?
Safety on the campus, people coming into the school through various sites other than straight in through the principal's office?
Well, it depends on how you control it. Certainly, you know, you could, I guess, in that scenario, you could have someone that, administration's not paying attention, that could, could slip in with the student, you know, through those doors if you have those doors open. I think it's really administrative thing. We, we try in most of our schools, be they high school or middle school, to provide some outdoor dining opportunities. And then it's purely administrative issue about whether that campus wants to allow that or not. So I think a lot of it may have to do with the locale in which that particular school is situated. But it's really tends to be from the adminis, from the school systems we work with, an administrative thing where that's something they allow.
I thought I saw one of the pictures where the cafeteria was here with seating inside, and then they could go through doors into a patio area with seating out there, and on the other side of that patio was a school bus.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to just, I don't want to interrupt Clark, but I guess, to me, I hear what you're saying, and to me, that, there's potential there for safety issues, but I mean, you could, you could deal with that with, in a lot of different ways.
There could be ornamental fencing that contains that.
Yeah, there's a lot of ways to...
School hours and it's open up for bus pickup, what have you. I don't think it's so much a transportation thing, I think you're thinking about more of intruders.
Yeah.
Than just whether it's in close proximity to the buses. Next question.
Wrestling room, not a space on the gym floor?
We heard that comment a lot, and right now, we're planning on incorporating a wrestling room in the plan.
Did, I've got a quick question, and I don't know if you heard, did, where did, where was the wrestling room yesterday down at Rocky River?
They practiced in the cafeteria.
Wow.
Good. You've got to have a place where you can turn on the heaters and let them sweat. Hallways, primary and secondary. In, in the current Davie High School, the primary pass-through E building is way wide. Great place for kids to stand and mix and mingle. Secondary halls in E are very congested. Anybody that goes to a tour is guided through there, and the bell rings and you get to witness that.
As a, for instance, at, at the Reagan concept, which is what your school was initially based upon, the main corridor is twenty feet wide. And then the feeder corridors that link the classroom fingers, Wesley, is that twelve, fourteen? Fourteen feet is a collector corridor that collects the four classroom wings. They can, a lot of that depends on whether or not we put lockers in the school, and that's been a hotly debated and discussed issue in all of our meetings. And it could be that, right now, we're not going to have lockers in the new high school. They just don't get used like they used to. Even down at Rocky River, you know, they had lockers down one side of the hallway, but most of them were not being used. They, they were corded off.
The principal at Rocky River indicated that they rented their lockers for three dollars, and five percent of the lockers in the school were used.
You know, at Reagan, the lockers are in locker bays at the end of the classroom corridors as opposed to down the corridor. So typically, in a high school, that corridor would need to be probably about ten feet if it didn't have lockers. If it has lockers, I typically like to make it about fourteen feet wide, because the lockers take up a foot on each side if you have them both sides. The doors swing open, that's another foot, and you net out ten feet if the locker is there and open.
Ms. Haynes is here, and Ms. Lynch is here, Mr. Wallace is here. I was at the high school as a teacher, and some places in a school, like in E building where the primary is from C to F, sometimes too wide is not good, because if it's too wide, it gives people the place to stand. The more people the place to stand, then the, it gets narrower. That's all figured in.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm trying to remember, most of your buildings on the existing campus, but I want to remember they're about eight feet wide. K Building, I think, has about ten-foot-wide corridors.
Number of shower spaces?
That's purely up to what this county needs and wants in their locker spaces. Most schools we do, it doesn't matter whether it's a high school or middle school, we just don't see a lot of shower use, and they, they try and minimize it. You know, when we all went to school, probably, and you're not as old as I am, Mr. Dressler, but, but we had, in the men's showers, they were group showers, and they, the showers were either raised around the wall, or there were shower trees and you could accommodate a lot of guys in there. The trend has been away from that. You know, they're more individualized, and it takes more of them, obviously, if you've got to shower a whole football team if they're by showers. You know, we find that most school systems these days, kids don't take a shower, you know, when they get through with PE class, they just dress and go on to the next class. We all had to take showers when I was growing up, PE class, sports, whatever, so there's a bigger need for it. Now, you know, your county, you know, if they're different and you want those, then, you know, we'll have to figure out how we provide showers, or how we make use of, if your greatest need is team showers, then a connector that allows some use of PE showers when you have a team event. And that was sort of what they did, and we've done that before down at Rocky River, is they could open a door and the team could go in and use the PE showers, but there weren't many of them. It was half a dozen.
The reason I brought it up is because of the picture that I saw, and one of the, talked about negative things about our current situation is that there's not enough showerheads to accommodate a PE class, and sometimes there's combinations of PE classes as many as a hundred in there at a time, in that class time. So if it was ten showerheads, or two, or twenty, again, it's going to go back to what do the kids want to use, are they being required to use them? And if what we have is so negative, then it needs to be very positive in the new that that is accommodated, or quit saying this is negative. The last thing on my list was the artificial turf on the football and/or soccer field.
I don't know all the studies on that about, you know, what the, you know, how injury-prone that is compared to natural turf. Obviously, it's more expensive going in, I've heard figures of seven hundred fifty-eight or a thousand dollars, and that's probably not too far off, but you're right, there's less maintenance long-term for, for football. If you're going to use it for multipurpose, then you use it for soccer as well, then obviously it has to be permanently striped for soccer. Is that something you want on your football field? Typically, on a turf field, it's just striped for the game and the soccer fades away or whatever, and you've got your football markings. So that's something for consideration. The other thing that we were discussing yesterday is, if you have natural turf, a lot of your field events for track are held around that natural turf surface, and if you're throwing a shot put or whatever, discus, I'm not sure if they throw that much in high school or javelin, you're not going to be throwing that into your natural turf, or into your artificial turf. So you have to plan areas for that if you do an artificial turf. Same thing for your pits, for your broad jump, and your...
Next, last question, I just, just added it on. Any of the site visits include a site that had a field house on the football or stadium area?
The, no, I mean, Rocky River yesterday was the only one that did. We have at our Walkertown site and at the Reagan site, you know, toilets and concessions, but not a field house. Now, the Rocky River one, it was, was rather small. It just had, you know, some, maybe, again, four or five showers in there. I think, would we count, Mr. Wallace, forty-five or so lockers in the locker room? We went in and we were told that the other locker room was the same size, so based on what we've been told about your athletic program, you've got a hundred and thirty-six kids playing football. Probably not all on the same game night, some are JV or what have you. I don't know how many you dress out. I think college is allowed about eighty-five or something like that. I don't know if y'all dress out that many or not, but forty-five doesn't sound sufficient for your program. So if there is a field house, obviously, you know, it would have to be somewhat larger than what we saw at Men Hill.
You'd been lucky, you'd probably get the coaching staff in the...
It was, it was small.
Rocky River, it was small. It was very...
Once you get the players in there, I don't have a coach, you've got several coordinators, offense, defensive line coaches, and whatever, I don't know how you get them in there and talk to your group. You couldn't do it. We can design you a field house of any size if you want. We've done most of the work over at Lake Forest and all of their facilities, including their replacement turf, so, an app state, so we can, we can do whatever you'd like to do, but it's just dollars.
I believe you were... Do you have any idea maybe the total square footage that this building may be? I mean...
We're approaching that, I don't know if we want to talk about that tonight.
I don't know that we've nailed that down, but it's going to be significantly larger than what we had in 2010, because we're taking into account the comments we received from everyone, and like Paul brought up, a wrestling room, we've added that piece in. So we're, we're finalizing our classroom counts and lab spaces. I think we're down, we're about twelve labs. So we're coming close to that, and that's what we hope to bring to the board very soon, is how, how many programs and what programs we're looking at and what that end up being as far as square footage.
I also noticed, and I just got two things, two more things, say, that the square footage of the classrooms at both schools in Forsyth County and at the school yesterday in Charlotte were small. What are you looking at as far as just a regular, you know, an English classroom?
We're, we're looking at a regular classroom being eight to eight-fifty.
Yeah, because some of these were seven-twenty or seven-thirty, they were just...
If I counted tiles correctly, I would guess they were roughly twenty-four by thirty-two, seven-twenty-four.
And I'll just make one statement, I noticed that, that, we didn't see a class change at, uh, Walkertown, but we did see one at Reagan, and we saw one yesterday at Rocky River, and the hallways are always crowded, no matter what school you're at, they were just packed. And, you know, so it's, you're going to have that, you know, to some degree. So I don't know about the flow issue, if you work, how you work on that, but I, I noticed that, that, at Reagan and at Rocky River, that the hallways were, you know, pretty tough.
The Rocky River, they had, they had two large circulation areas, as you remember, Mr. Ridenhour, and you had two, had L-shaped wings coming together, and where they came together, that hallway was twenty feet. So again, it's, there's a lot of kids that you're throwing into that one hallway, and then they got pinched, even though there were two or three stairs in that area, they got pinched when they went, I'm going to say, to the north towards the main entry hallway and the gym and the cafeteria because of the stair configuration and size. So it's tough. You have to provide multiple routes to get them out.
I, I would just give another viewpoint on that. I, I don't necessarily want to disagree with you, but I thought that was one of the greatest improvements that I saw when we were at Reagan, and that I heard from the staff say that during the class change, there was a significant difference in the crowded hallways between, by comparing Reagan to our existing high school. So I, I, I saw that differently, but maybe that was just me.
Well, I, I would, to that, to that point, discussion about the hallway, I think that one thing that I saw, that I noticed, and I didn't time anything, obviously, but in looking at where the places we were at class change at Reagan, one of the things that I saw a little bit differently than at Davie High, a lot differently, actually, was the initial surge of students out of the classrooms. There was a lot of students coming out of the classrooms at Reagan, but it, it left quickly. There was a, it, it, it seemed to fade away. There was a, it, it seemed to fade away a whole lot more quickly than you see that happening at Davie. I think that's, and that speaks to the fact that you have multiple ways, you have wider hallways, it's, I mean, that, to me, is what I saw. And at, at Rocky River, it, the layout at that school, it was a very nice school, but the layout there was such to me that it was kind of directing people together, if you will. That was my point of view of it.
Well, I think I asked some of the students when we were at Reagan, I believe that they said they had five minutes to change classrooms, and is it seven at six at Davie High? And that they had no trouble getting there. So that may have been because it was a little bit more, you know, the campuses confined. But just from me personally, I didn't, I, I thought that the wide hallways did make a difference.
In some of the questions that Paul had, I think one thing that was encouraging to me was the fact that the, excuse me, since staff was there. I mean, prime example, asking about like the science labs. Elizabeth Bussel, she spent a good bit of time with their department head there, talking about, you know, I mean, one of the rooms, they had a dishwasher, and it would have never dawned on me to have a dishwasher in, but I mean, I can understand why. But, you know, them being able to sit there and discuss why, you know, a chemistry and a physics and something a little bit more hands-on does need to be bigger, the way it's set up, as far as why those rooms do have those labs, where those lab facilities are located at the front of the room. So I guess in a nutshell, what I was saying, I think that was probably the thing I really enjoyed about the tours, was having them to be able to hear their perspective, because they're in it every day, and we don't have, we don't know those questions to ask. So that was, that was great. As far as talking about, I was making notes, just talking about like the cafeteria. You know, another thing that jumped out at me, because I, I did not get to go on the one yesterday, but as far as with Reagan and Walkertown, and I think this might lend also to why, even though, yeah, there's congestion in hallways, but maybe why it doesn't seem so, is the thing that jumped out at me was it was so light in those buildings, and it was just the whole feeling that you had. And I, you know, I sat there and several times thought, from the perspective of a student walking in that environment, just how it was just bringing the outside in, how that just really did make for a pleasant environment. And then it did make things not feel so crowded. So that was, that was, that was really nice to see. Talking about Walkertown as far as, or did any of them have the fieldhouse? Didn't, didn't see any fieldhouses, obviously, but something. And I think Steve and I, maybe you and I can't remember, but how they had the concrete at the Walkertown site, down there at all the fields. I mean, those were some, to me, just really smart ways as far as the way that whole sort of athletic complex, as far as with the baseball field and the football field. And it just was really smartly, or smartly, it was done very well. And so it was, I was, I was really glad that I got to go to the Career Center. There's no way to describe that place unless you go. It's, it's awesome. But, you know, I think the, the beauty for me in going on those tours was, like Dr. Hardness says, there's not one of those schools that we saw that we can sit there and say, okay, we want to pick this school up and set it in Davie County. But we're in a position where, and especially having the staff there, they were able to say, this would work for us and our students. And so we're able to really make it a, you know, a process where we can build what works for us. So it was, it, I really was glad I got to go. And, you know, I left feeling, thinking, gosh, I want to give this to our kids. So it's, this probably goes to staff report. But anyhow, I just, as Paul was asking questions, I just, those things came to mind.
Thank you, guys. Do we have any other questions or comments from Clark? If we don't, that'll conclude our facilities update. Thank you so much, and we look forward to, glad you guys came, and we look forward to, to seeing the end result here in February, hopefully. Thank you. Now, moving on with our agenda, we're at the public comment period. Ms. Wilson, do we have anybody?
We have one speaker, so no one will get to use any baseball analogies of any kind, but Mr. Coles, if you'll come forward, please, and address the board. And don't forget, you have five minutes, and state your name and address when you start.
James Coles Farmington, it was sad about the Red Sox this year. It is always inspiring to come to the school board meetings and to see the superb effort of teachers and staff challenging students and helping them have more choices and opportunities in life. I also want to thank you all for your service, and thank the superintendent for his work on academic quality in our school. Listening tonight, I'm, as a retired physician, I'm always concerned about observer bias, both from the inside of the facility and from the outside of the facility. There's obviously a pride in where you work, and there's also the desire to have something be better, whether it's new. The issue, of course, for our county has to do with the making one big, huge decision to see if the taxpayers will pay for it, or going incrementally. I'm still reminded of Little's design for the restoration of our local high school, the fact that it would be light and airy, that at Rocky Hill, the internal classrooms have no light, because the buildings are much bigger. And that if the building is smaller, and maybe you build up even a third story, you get light on both sides, on two rows of classrooms with one central hallway. The other issue is selection bias, and we see that in the newspapers and publication bias. And there's also observer bias, because we always come to everything with our own choices and desires. I'm also reminded, as we sometimes shudder of the memory of the mass homicides, and we all consider ways of preventing this. I remember graduating from third grade in Public School Fifty-Six in Buffalo, New York, Lafayette High School, which was sixty-two years old when I graduated. It is now a hundred-and-ten. But they were both fifth-floor, five-story buildings, because you didn't have to have an elevator back then, unless you went up to the sixth floor. Of course, the biggest hazard was fire. And nobody had closed-circuit cameras, but every teacher became a fire marshal. The instant the fire bell rang, we had a practice escape twice a week at the elementary school, once a week at the high school. But the fire hazard was a serious concern then. I don't know if it qualifies for comparison now, but the issue is escape. And you can escape by diversion, dispersion, or you can escape by seeking a safe room, or fortifying, or barricading a room to protect the students. I'm not sure what should be done, but I, I'm sure that each teacher will then become a security person at the moment of an alarm, and will help decide which way you go and how you practice this. I'm not afraid of practicing disaster stuff. It really does empower the children when they know they have something to do. And if they can follow the instructions and, and practice, I think that's essential for protecting our schools with drills. And I wanted to say that my bias, of course, in a new building is to have bigger science labs. The science labs seem very small to me. And they need to have both the classroom size and a larger space for tables and labs. The last thing I would like to say is that I suggest that agendas be printed for people. You really do want the participation of everybody in the community. You want feedback. Some of us like to make notes on the agenda. We like to take them home and think about what was done. We do have computers, lots of us, but we don't have the printers. This system here is unreadable from the audience, and we can't tell what's going on. Certainly, if you put numbers up there, we would have no idea what the cost of anything would be. So please consider a printed agenda. The only comment on the new Davie County schools, besides innovate, achieve, and excel, is remember tradition. And tradition, I think, is extremely important as we, as a new member of Davie County, for sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and that concludes our public speaking for today.
Thank you for the comments. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. I'm sorry. Yep. We need to take a, a quick break for our video reset here, just a couple minutes. We're gonna, we're gonna get started back. Our, our next item on the agenda is committee and staff reports. And our first item there, under there, is Career and Technical Education, Donna McNeil.
Good evening. It's my pleasure this evening to share with you some technical data from Career and Technical Education. As part of our Career and Technical Education program, we do receive the Carl Perkins funding, which means that statistics and data from CTE is reported annually, recorded by the state, and reported to the federal government. Tonight, I would like to share two different types of data with you, and this is in your board packet. The first one is the technical attainment data. Technical attainment is the end-of-course results of our students who are enrolled in career and technical education classes. This report is sharing with you that ninety-one-point-eight percent of the students enrolled in a CTE course met the state standards for proficiency in their course. If you'll notice there, in the blue, seventy-eight-point-one was the state goal. We were at ninety-one-point-eight percent in Davie County. That is in the top five percent of all LEAs across the state. Accolades to our teachers and staff for those results. The other data on your report shows concentrator data. Again, as part of the Carl Perkins Act, each year, we contact, one year after they graduate from high school, we are required to contact the concentrators who have completed CTE programs. And a concentrator is defined as a student who has completed four CTE courses in one national cluster or pathway, and one of those has to be a completer course or a Level Two course. Your drafting two, your food sciences two, your allied, or your health sciences two program. So those are completer courses. In working, looking at that data, a student who has completed a CTE concentration at Davie High School, or more than like ninety-four-point-five percent of those students will graduate from high school. Ninety-four-point-five. Again, the state goal there was eighty-five percent. We were at ninety-four-point-five. You can see that we had an increase from eighty-eight-point-four in 2010-11 to ninety-four-point-five percent as part of our last year's cohort. Statewide, last year, Dr. June Adkinson celebrated with CTE the fact that CTE at that point was at eighty-nine-point-six percent. This year, we will again have a celebration at our state conference, because that rate has now gone up to ninety-four percent. You can see that this is a statewide benchmark for us, where students, again, who have a concentration, they have a focus in high school, are more likely to graduate from high school by, again, reducing that dropout rate. So if we can get them, odds are that we can keep them and graduate them from high school. So that is a tremendous result for us. Another area that I want to point out to you is that secondary placement, the third one down in that list at the top, secondary placement. I do want you to notice there that in Davie County, we did have a drop last year. In 2010-11, we had ninety-four-point-nine percent of our students reporting that they were going on to a post-secondary school, and this past year, we only had ninety-two-point-six percent. Again, this is a concern of mine. I think it should be a concern of our community in the fact that, first of all, in looking at our community, looking at our, the increase in college tuitions at our community colleges and at our four universities, we also have to look at our unemployment rate, our economy. And as someone had pointed out to me, and I went back and did a little research on this, twenty-three-point-five percent of our teens, our youth, were unemployed in October of 2012. So that says to me that it is even more important that we get these students involved in some type of post-secondary program, while they're in high school or once they graduate from high school. The only area in that report that is red, there is our non-traditional completion rate. Again, they are looking at here, our non-traditional student is a student, females in drafting class, they are males in our health science classes, they are males in our foods-two classes. We have a non-traditional participation rate that is above the state average, but we had difficulty last year in maintaining and keeping those students and taking them on to a Level Two course. So if that is our only area there that is in red, hey, we can work on that one, and we will get it back to where it needs to be. Again, I think the reading and language arts and mathematics scores there show that we are doing wonderful things in Davie County. Those scores are based on the English One EOC score and the mathematics, Algebra One scores. And you can see how, again, it is those ninth-grade scores, but these are the students that graduated last year. So three years ago, they took those scores, and we are showing that we are making headway, and we are improving the math and reading scores for our students across the district. I think that is just another benchmark that we can use to show improvement. So again, I think we have some excellent results here to share with you and in our community. Very proud of our CTE staff, our high school administrative staff, in being able to produce these results for CTE in Davie County. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McNeil. We appreciate it. It showcases the point that career technical education is very important in Davie County, and congratulate everyone on all the hard work to achieve these levels. Next, we have accountability with Erin Fuller.
Good evening, board members, members of the community. I did want to come today to give you a brief report on common exams. You may have heard of them referred to before as measures of student learning. So don't be confused, they are the same thing. Common exams, we will start those this year. The North Carolina Department of Instruction has provided to all school systems a common exam for all of the non-tested subjects and grade levels in order to help our evaluation system with our teachers. So the point is, is to have these common exams to have a measurement across the state to where we can evaluate our teachers and see what kind of growth that our students have. These will be first implemented this Friday. At Davie High School, we start our exam period, and planning has been very strenuous, but also very successful. So I think we're very ready on Friday to start with our common exam implementation. These scores from the common exams, they'll be used in the student final grades, and they will be used in teacher evaluation. Because they're used in teacher evaluation, they will not be reported publicly or included in the state accountability model, because that is not their purpose. We do have an accountability model for our district that we will be publishing numbers on at the end. But I did want to come and talk about common exams just a little bit, and let you know that we were giving them, because you've probably heard from people in the community about the fact that we have... the fact that we have all of these new tests that we're giving at the end of the semester. And that, at the end of this year, we will be giving common exams also in the middle schools. We will be doing sixth, seventh, and eighth grade social studies, and sixth and seventh grade science, as well as in fourth grade science. Are there any questions about common exams? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Next, we have curriculum update with Dr. Danny Carter.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Harkness, members of staff, members of the community. Our robotics program tends to garner some attention and is a place where we marry curriculum with extracurricular activities. And so we've sort of committed to trying to update the board when we have a major robotics event and let you know what's going on and what's coming up. And we did have a big event on December the 18th. It was aimed primarily at our middle school students, but all of our elementaries were invited to participate, and we did have Moxville Elementary School participated. And it was different from anything we'd done before. We did dragsters, we did sumo wrestling, and we did tug-of-war. And I brought with me tonight a two-minute and 15-second video to encapsulate a little bit of what went on that evening. So if we can play that video, as video plays, right after the last dragster race that you see, there's one young man that I want you to pay attention to and see why it is that we come back week after week to do this. And pay attention to the noise level in the gym. This is at South Davie's Gym. Pay attention to the noise level in the gym when we have the finals of the tug-of-war. we've done with the robotics program. But that evening, we had kids talking to us about having to match the amount of power they allowed the motor to use with the amount of traction that they could get from different-sized wheels, and talking about the gear ratios so that they could get the most speed without lifting the front end off the ground so they didn't have a break in momentum when it landed. And kids talking about how low they could build that sumo bot to turn the other ones over or push them over. It was, there was more physics learned doing those activities than, than you can possibly imagine for elementary and middle school kids. So it was a huge success. And where do we go from there? Where we go from there is that this spring, we will have two events, one on February the 28th and one on April the 26th. And these events will be centered on the book, The Wizard of Oz, not the movie, but the book. And that brings a great deal of literacy to play with the robotics. Over here on these boards, we have posted the mat, that is the mat for these competitions. And we want to give kudos and thank yous to Lynn Taylor Graphics and to Davis Sign Company for helping us with those mats. And students themselves will be writing the challenges to program solutions for, for these upcoming events. And then in April, when we have the grand finale for the year, we plan to have a community build where anybody who shows up, we have big buckets of Legos, and you can contribute to the building of one of the castles from The Wizard of Oz, and perhaps an interactive poster contest that goes along with that as well. So big things going on there, and lots of knowledge being attained by a lot of students in a lot of different ways, and all of it very hands-on and very interactive. So please join us. And one thing, I apologize to Mr. Ricky that I didn't put in the calendar of events. The spelling bee is February 12th. So please do note on your calendar that February the 12th is spelling bee, always a big event and very enjoyable. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Next, we have finance update, Deborah Smink.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller, members of the board, Dr. Harkness. This month, I'm sharing with you the budget timeline for the 13-14 budget. Our committee members are the executive leadership team of Dr. Harkness, myself, Mr. Wallace, Ms. Grady Smith, and Mr. Rooney. Also, Elizabeth Phillips, our exceptional children's director, Jennifer Custer, our principal of the year from North Davie Middle School, and Karen Martin, our teacher of the year from Ellis Middle School. I'll just make a note of several of the different items listed on this timeline. Back in November and December, our principals began meeting with their school faculty, their advisory councils, their PTAs, their PTOs, to get input to prepare their budget requests for next year. The budget requests that the schools have prepared or will be presented to the committee, to myself, and to Mr. Rooney and Mr. Evans, our maintenance director, this Thursday, January 10th. We will, we will look through those, and there'll be several meetings of the budget committee to look through the requests. And we are required to present to, the superintendent is required to present to you by May 1st, a budget together with a budget message. And then this budget request is required to be presented to the county commissioners by May 15th. You also see there, June, mostly what'll happen in June is we'll be waiting to hear of the, the budget that's been adopted by the General Assembly. Hopefully, it will be June. That would be nice if they actually adopt a budget by June 30th. And then, once they do adopt the budget, we'll look at what has been adopted by the General Assembly and present the final budget for your approval at our September 2013 board meeting. Any questions on the budget timeline? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smink. And thanks to everyone for those committee and staff reports. We, there's a lot of good things happening in Davie County Schools, and we appreciate that information. Now, we move to the point in the agenda for board comments, and I really don't know whose time it is. It's Wendy's time, okay.
Well, I didn't think I would begin one first, but I guess since I said so much during the earlier, I'll make, make this brief. Just do want to take a minute to, you know, extend sympathy to the Kirk family. Coach Kirk was at North Davie when I was there. My husband, he wrestled for Coach Kirk, and it's, you know, it's a big loss for our community. So just prayers for, for that family. Congratulations to all those who were recognized tonight, and the CTE stuff, that was great. I've kind of, in the last couple months, I guess, become more educated on really CTE and all that it really has to offer students, especially today. So, so that, that was great to hear. Thanks, everyone, for sticking around. It was pretty lengthy tonight, and see you next month.
Echo some of the things that Wendy was saying, but number one, Happy New Year to everyone. It was a big turnout at the beginning of the meeting, and thanks to you folks for sticking it out to the end. I do want to make a plug if I can. Heidi Judd has worked out this deal, and Heidi, you're gonna have to stand up and yell this out, anything that I don't say right, okay? She has, I think, gone over and beyond what you would expect out of a teacher assistant. They're supposed to just assist teachers during the classroom. She's worked out this deal with some restaurants here in the county, and the deal is that if you go eat at this restaurant on one of these given nights, a portion of the receipts from that meal is given to the teacher assist, teacher assistance program, and they use it for scholarships for the kids that they've been working with since they were little puppies. So Heidi, when is your next meal?
It's the fourth Tuesday.
And is it always at Zico's? Fourth, let me say this again, correct me if I'm wrong, fourth Tuesday, Zico's, anytime in the evening. That's the, the fourth Tuesday. I'm like, is this, am I being recorded?
Are you getting a commission?
A commission, yeah. No, it's, it's good foods, good fellowship. There's a lot of people that already know about it. If you don't know about it, you need to. The owner at Zico's is willing to do that, and it's very well appreciated and very good. So good work, Heidi, on putting that together. Recognizations tonight, I'll speak to that just briefly. It's always good to get recognized for good things, and especially the athletes tonight. I said earlier, I used to be one and then was a coach and part of that program. It helped me become who I am, good or bad, Wendy. But anybody that achieves that level as those two football players and the coach that was involved, that, that's hats off big time. And also, the academic acknowledgements or recognitions tonight, staff, administrators, teachers, students. Wonderful thing. I'm done.
Thank you to all, and good night.
I'm gonna try to make this short. I want to congratulate those that were honored tonight, the Ms. Foster, the athletes and coaches, and, you know, Wendy mentioned Coach Kirk. He touched a lot, a lot of young lives in this county, as a lot of the coaches and teachers do. And, you know, we need to be in prayer for that family and, and the family of Jim Average, who led this school system for many years. You know, Paul mentioned something about scholarships, and Dr. Harkness, it was in your annual report that over $2.5 million worth of scholarships were awarded to Davie County students in the 2011, 2000, I think it was 2.573, over 411 graduates. That's over $6,000 per student, and I think that's something to be proud of. I know you didn't mention it, I just wanted to say something about it.
Well, of course, we have a lot to be proud of and a lot of successes. We have had a lot of losses. Something struck me, I think, when Dr. Knowles was speaking, actually, I was thinking about a month ago, we sat here, and I remember saying what a blessing it was to live in this county and how fortunate we all are. And it was just a few weeks later that we saw such a tragedy in another county that seemed so similar to our small town. And I was, of course, I know that was on everybody's mind, but I looked out there and I thought of all of you, principals, teachers, janitors, administrators, and I, and I thought of that one principal who gave her life up for those students, and I knew that every, every employee that we have in this county would do the same thing. And you never, I never, I played school all my whole life, thinking I would be a teacher or something, and I never thought that that would fall into my role, but I know all of you would. So I pray for those, I thank you for doing that. I thank you for taking on that role. Pray for those families still, and for our county as well. Thank you for being here tonight, and look forward to great things happening.
Well, I'll make, I'll make mine short. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I appreciate everybody coming and especially you guys sticking around. I would also, again, like to, to ask everyone to remember the Kirk family and the Average family. And I think that concludes all of our, our agenda items tonight, other than adjourning.
Sure, sure. Carol brought it up about the shooting in Connecticut and being in prayer for those families up there, and especially right there at Christmas. But I wanted to thank Dr. Harkness on Monday morning, you know, we were on the tour on Friday when all that happened, and on Monday morning, he went right to work in reassuring the parents and the families of the, you know, it'll never be 100% safe, we know that, but I just want to thank you for the work you've done on reassuring and working to, to better what is a good plan that we already have in place. I just failed to mention that.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Steve. That's, there's been a whole lot of hard work, and, and that started with Dr. Harkness, and we, we thank you for that. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. We have a motion in a second. Everyone in favor? We are adjourned.